Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. On behalf of the Fort Ben Chamber of Commerce, the League of Women Voters, Houston, ABC 13, and our host partner, the Ismaili Council for Southwestern United States, I would like to welcome each of you to the 2021 Sugar Land City Council Forum. This forum includes candidates for Sugar Land City Council Districts One and Four. And it is our honor to welcome each of them to the Ismaili Jamat Kana and Center. Although the forum is being brought to you virtually, I am particularly excited that we have been able to host the forum at the Ismaili Jamat Kana and Center. The Fort Ben Chamber is a proud community partner and friend of the Center, finding common ground in our mutual and respective missions. In keeping with the Shia Islamic tradition, the Center is an essential contributor to the fabric of the Sugar Land community, fosters an appreciation of pluralism and for enhancing relationships and mutual exchanges among diverse peoples, faith communities, civic organizations, and civil society. As such, it is a fitting venue for this important event. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize the forum's editorial committee, a diverse group of individuals who have worked to analyze the issues which affect the Sugar Land community. Their involvement has ensured that this forum highlights a spectrum of issues that will help inform your decisions as we approach Election Day. Lastly, I would like to introduce our moderators for the forum, Maya Shay and Rehan Al-Mohamed. Maya Shay is a reporter at ABC 13. Since joining ABC 13 in 2002, Maya has covered almost every story imaginable. She has traveled extensively for reporting assignments, including trips to China, Brazil, Korea, and Japan. Maya graduated from Syracuse University with a degree in broadcast journalism and a minor in Asian history. We are delighted to have Maya here with us today. Also with us as a moderator is Rehan Al-Mohamed. Rehan is a partner at the Sugar Land office of Wong Fleming, which is the largest minority-owned law firm in the country. He has been named a super lawyer and is the first Asian and the first attorney from Fort Ben County to be Chair of the Board of the State Bar of Texas. Proudly, Rehan is a past chairman and legal counsel for the Fort Ben Chamber and former Chair of the Legal Matters Portfolio for the Ismaili Council for Southwestern United States. Welcome, Rehan. Please mark your calendars. Early voting runs from April 19th to the 27th, and Election Day is May 1st. You know, these elections are so important, and they chart the course for our city for years to come. So please exercise your civic duty and vote. And with that, on behalf of the Fort Ben Chamber of Commerce and our fellow partners, we hope you enjoy the forum and find it to be informative and valuable. Candidates, please take your seats on stage.
All right. It's so great to be here. Good morning, everyone. I'm Maya Shay, along with Rehan. We're both thrilled to be here. The Ismaili Center always does an amazing job with so many different community events over the years, especially the political forums. It's so well done. We really appreciate that. And today, we have with us Sugar Land City Council candidates from District One and Four. From District One, we have Donna Batten Moho and Suzanne Watley. From District Four, we have Saki Joseph and Carol McCutcheon. The questions for the forum were identified and reviewed in consultation with an editorial committee comprising of a group of Sugar Land residents with input provided by the League of Women Voters. And we would like to take this opportunity to thank our entire editorial team for their insight and their brilliance into the issues affecting the great city of Sugar Land.
Thank you, Maya. Today's forum will last approximately 75 minutes. The discussion will consist of a short opening offered by each candidate, followed by pre-selected questions. Each candidate will have one minute to answer a majority of the questions presented to them. However, certain questions will have a 90-second response time. We'll let you know which ones have 90 seconds; otherwise, you can assume one minute. There will be certain questions that will be answered by all the candidates, while others will be asked only to a specific district. Again, we'll let you know which ones. At the end of the forum, each candidate will be given one minute for their closing remarks. Given the nature of this event and to avoid any distractions, we kindly request the audience members to do your best to remain seated until the end of the forum, and please ensure your cell phones are on mute. Please note, the event is being recorded for streaming.
All right. So let's get started. The first question, an easy one for all the candidates, please introduce yourselves and tell us what qualifies you as the best candidate for your city council position. And we will start with Donna.
Thank you. And first, I'd like to tell all the partners that have helped bring this forum together, thank you very much. I know it's a very important event for the city of Sugar Land. I would like to tell you that I was born and raised in Sugar Land. I was actually born in District One on Eldridge Road at Laura Eldridge Hospital. I grew up on Brook Street. My father worked at Imperial Sugar. My mother worked next door at Nalco Chemical Company. And we raised, we were raised on Brook Street in Belknap Brookside. I went to Lakeview Elementary. Went to Dulles High School. Went away to Texas Tech University, got my degree, and immediately returned to live in District One. I have 30 years of community and retail development and redevelopment, most notably Senior General Manager at First Colony Mall in Sugar Land.
Thank you so much. Next, Suzanne.
Hello. My name is Suzanne Watley, and I appreciate everyone being here, and especially the people who put this together for us. An informed voter is always a good voter. I have lived in Sugar Land for 24 years. I am a small business owner, and my husband and I have been involved in the community avidly, volunteering for those 24 years. Six years ago, I decided to run for this position. I've worked really hard to get to know our community by volunteering, working with other leaders, serving in different capacities. I'm also Commissioner on Planning and Zoning. And I thought that was important, to learn how our city operates, the governance. It's not only important to be involved and be a part of the community, but to know how we serve our community and to know how our city operates. So it's important for me to learn how to actually be a part of this and know how to serve. As a part of that, I am a small business owner and avid, avid advocate for small business. Thank you.
Thank you. Saki?
My name is Saki Joseph. I just want to thank you, Jamaat Islamic Society, for conducting this event. Thank you, moderators and fellow candidates. As you know, I live here in Greatwood more than 70 years. That's where I live, and I work in Medical Center as a data architect and application programmer. Why I'm running for the Sugar Land City Council, because I have the passion for the people. I love to serve the people and address their issues and their day-to-day life. And I have this experience, wide experience, serving people from different angles, nationally and internationally. I've been with the people last several months, listening to them what they want. I want to fulfill their vision. That's why I'm running for the city council. I want to take this city's prosperity and economic growth and sustain for the next 25 years. That is my vision, and can our childrens and grandchildren can live here peacefully.
Thank you. Carol?
Hello. I'm Carol McCutcheon, Sugar Land City Council member, District Four. I would like to thank the Ismaili Jamat Kana Center, the Fort Ben Chamber of Commerce, and the Houston League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I would like to take this opportunity, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Ismaili Jamat Kana Center for hosting the Share Your Holidays Food Drive each year, the water distribution after the major freeze, and for all of the many other supply drives that we do here for being a focal point to those in our community in need. For the past 28 years, I have worked hard to serve our community and city. I'm running for reelection to my third term on city council. I have worked very, very hard for the past four years on behalf of all residents of our city.
Thank you, Carol, and thank you to all the candidates for being here. We're going to go ahead and get started. If I don't direct the question, or if we don't direct the question to a specific district, just assume it's for all of you, so we don't have to tell you every single time. So let's get into the first question. You have a free Saturday in Sugar Land. Assuming you don't have to worry about a pandemic, how would you spend it? Suzanne, we'll start with you.
Hello. That's a great question, because we don't have many free Saturdays right now. But when we do, the farmer's market at Imperial Park, we love going there. We love seeing the vendors there, and that's where we usually start our morning, after we have coffee together, because that's our ritual. We have coffee together every Saturday morning. So we'll take the dog and we'll go visit the vendors and see what's going on. We meet neighbors there and see what's happening. We love going out in the neighborhood and actually supporting the various events that our city puts on, because we do a great job with that in the city. This city is known for putting on cultural events and all kinds of different things that interest our people here. So we'd probably hang on there. We also love to go hang out at the ballpark. We are avid softball fans, and although our girls are grown up, we still have friends that go there. Brad's still considering getting back on that board. We're talking about that. But we'll probably go do that, and then we'll hang out probably and do a couple other things in the city if there's an event. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Saki?
It's a good question. Thank you for that question. The first thing in the morning, I go to check, usually I do check my neighbors, everybody's okay. So I'm very people are in person, then take my dog to the park, meet the people over there, and then make a phone call to my parents if they are doing okay. And the Saturdays, most of my mornings are connecting with the people back again after the busy week. So I want to make sure my friends, my family, my neighbors, fellows, whoever I associated with are doing great. Then shopping, as a family man, you have to take a shopping and take my daughter with me. And evening, I will look around, any events going on in the city center or the park, on Memorial Park, and we do for a small walk, then go to the church. It's 6:30 every Saturday, we got a worship. That's my Saturday, normal Saturday prior to the pandemic.
Thank you. Carol?
Yes, well, I too often start my morning on Saturday at the Sugar Land Farmer's Market. I've been going there since the day that it opened, and I love supporting our local farmers and local vendors there. And we have two dogs, and they love their walks. So we take them on a really long walk around our lake in our neighborhood every morning. And then, when the weather's good, my husband and I will hop on our bicycles and take a ride for a couple hours on our bicycles through our beautiful city. And then there's always so many great places to go out to eat. So the choice is, you know, which one do we want to go to today? And we'll also go to Sugar Land Town Square so many times. There's events going on in the afternoon or evening. And also, soon, we're going to be having our Astros AAA affiliate, Best Baseball, starting up. So we'll be able to go to some baseball games as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna?
So my typical Saturday, I get up, usually place a call to my mom to check on her. And then, if the weather's great, my husband and I usually talk about whether or not we're going to ride the Harley. And if we're lucky enough to do that, we usually ride it around Sugar Land. And then lately, I've got a grandson that's playing Little League, and I've got our youngest fourth-generation Sugar Lander that should be playing softball soon. So we have gone up to the softball fields, we go out to the Little League fields. And then in my neighborhood, we have some amazing lakes and walking trails, and we actually walk to look for our big alligator friend in the lake, make sure he hasn't switched over to our side of the lake. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next question. Like many local governments, during the pandemic, Sugar Land is facing a potential revenue shortfall. What should city council do to mitigate the long-term financial impact of this pandemic? And we'll start with you, Saki.
We need to analyze what projects are we are doing. So we need to limit the wasteful spending. That is transparency and accountability is a part of this project. So we have to review what we are doing right now. It's what is important for our life and society. So that's where we can balance our budget, we can balance our economy to be, in other words, if I can say, to allocate the fund or the money the best way to use for the people. We are working for the people. They need to be happy, and they need to be taken care of very well. So that's why City of Sugar Land need to be analyzed what they're doing right now, and there need to be an auditing, and no open check for any contractors.
Thank you. Carol?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes, please. What should Sugar Land City Council do to mitigate long-term financial impact of this pandemic for the city?
Yes, well, having a little issues with the microphone cutting out here. Anyway, we have worked on a number of ways to keep our costs contained and to have a hiring freeze and not to bring any more additional employees onboard or to fill those vacancies. And we had a $90 million government obligation bond package that was passed in November 2019, and we were going to complete those projects in the next few years. And those were critical projects with drainage, our infrastructure, roads, and a new animal shelter. But now, because of the economy, we have stretched those projects out over a longer timeframe, because those projects would entail a tax rate increase, which was approved by the voters. But given the current economic situation, we did not want to do a tax rate increase to accommodate that, and so that will be stretched out over the next five years now.
Thank you. And just for the mics, they're usually directional, so you want to just kind of put it right in front of you. That would help with the connections. Donna?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that again?
Of course. Like many local governments, Sugar Land is facing a revenue shortfall because of the pandemic. What should city council do to mitigate that?
Well, I think the good news is, from a retail perspective, the sales tax did not drop as significantly as was originally planned, so that's good news. The second thing that I saw that I was very impressed with is the city became to think like a retailer. And by that, I mean, they came up very quickly and innovatively with these great programs with offering gift cards, buy one, get one, which generated money for the restaurants, which were so desperately in need of business, whether it was to go or in person. And so I think those types of programs are things that the city can continue to help mitigate some of those problems created by the pandemic. And of course, getting shots in arms, getting people reopened, definitely.
Thank you so much. Suzanne?
Can you hear me? Thank you. The city, it's not what we should do, it's what we've already done. If you look at the budget for 2021, we've already made changes, and we reacted to this really right away. Our budget for 2020 had already had some accommodations for events like this, because we already planned. Citizens need to know that Sugar Land plans ahead, and we are prepared for these kinds of things. We didn't see this coming, but we had some room to navigate. So in 2021, we have looked at ways to mitigate this by going forward. As Carol mentioned, we have the bonds that are now put on hold for three to five years. And the only things that we're moving forward on are things that are really, that are important, like drainage and water surface, surface water. Going forward, I think that they're looking at things that are going to be put on hold, hiring, travel, things that aren't important for us at this moment, and looking at things that are absolutely important to us at this time.
Thank you. All right. This next question is just for District Four. It has been over three years since Greatwood became part of Sugar Land. How do you intend to ensure that the Sugar Land Way continues to serve this community well going forward? Carol, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Yes, since the, since Greatwood was annexed into the city, the city has spent a lot of money on Greatwood, in particular with respect to the water plant. The water plants were not up to the standards of the city, so we spent a lot of money upgrading those water systems so they would be up to the city's standards. We also installed security in the water systems, and also, if there was no redundancy. So if a part had failed, all of Greatwood could have lost water. So we got a redundant system in place. Also sidewalks, roads were in need of repair, and street signs were very weathered. So we've put a lot of money into, you know, the road sidewalks, street signs, to keep that very nice. And I'm particularly proud of the $3 million that I helped secure for Greatwood for this fiscal year for Greatwood Village drainage improvements.
Thank you. Saki?
Yes, as a Greatwood resident, I can say that multiple things, especially, we are facing a big issue right now with the trash pickup. You know, we are going through a one, not a normal weather, I know, pandemic, and, you know, we got snow here, which we never expect that. But again, the trash pickup went completely out of order in the last two months. If you come to my home today, you will see 30 days of the trash piling up, solid waste. I think one of that, the key issue, I am listening from the residents. I'm going with their home streets every day, every day. Finally, I had to roll up my sleeves, took my old truck, and pick up the trash a couple of weeks ago. That's one of the issue, when we need more policing trolling in that area. That is another issue I want, I want to take it into the city council.
Thank you so much. Next question is for the candidates in District One. The future of the Imperial Market is a district-defining question. What do you think needs to happen and why? And we start with Donna.
So Imperial Market could not have had worse timing. From my background, I know that the developer needed about 65% of their gross leasable area leased in order to break ground. And several days before there was a move to get that underway, the pandemic closed everything down. So the timing has been horrible. I think what the city needs to do is partner with the developer to be able to attract regional and national retailers, and we need to do everything we can to help them present Sugar Land as a great site selection and a great place to do business. And I also think that the Fort Ben Chamber would be a great partner as well to help sell the community and sell the city.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Can you please repeat the question?
Yeah, the future of the Imperial Market is a district-defining question. What would you think needs to happen, when and why?
Thank you. I look at that every single day from my office, from where I work, and it's a beautiful site, or it could be. The Imperial Char House itself presents a lot of problems, and we've talked about a lot of things, hotels, restaurants, and hotel is kind of out of the question with the railroad there. So one of the problems is, what do we make of the building itself, and how do we build around it? People have come up with great ideas. We've had letters of intent on that place, but we couldn't fulfill them because of financing. And the degree of financing we're looking at has been difficult for so many people. We've lost contracts on it because of that. And as Donna said, COVID didn't help. I think one of the things we can do is take it as it is and start using it. Let's use some of the funding the city has right now, open it up, and make it an attraction. We've been to different places in Katy or in Austin where they take barns and put out lights and stage, bring out some venues that we have. We have great local bands that can come out there, make it a family venue, make it easy, get people used to going there. Start where we are. Why wait?
Thank you. What do you see as the key environmental issue facing Sugar Land, and what is your vision for addressing it? Suzanne, we'll start with you.
I'm sorry.
Repeat the question. What do you see as the key environmental issue facing Sugar Land, and what is your vision for addressing it?
The key environmental issue? That's interesting. I've been talking to some people in District One. Mobility is, if you want to call it an environmental issue. Air quality, we've had a lot of discussions about that. I don't think there is a key environmental issue. It's comprehensive, and we have to look at ways of addressing all of them at once or all of them over the five-year plan. The 2025-year plan just came out, and it also addresses a lot of issues. Environmentally, we're looking at erosion along Brazos. That's a huge issue. We have to work with the Corps of Army Engineers to address that issue and make sure we have infrastructure that's going to last. We have bridges in this county and the city that are at risk, that we have to look at really fast to make sure we sustain our infrastructure. Air control, I think our city's done a great job of monitoring that. If that's an environment issue that you want to address, I'm out of time.
Thank you. Saki?
Yes, actually, if I go back to the Brazos River erosion, but look at this, Brazos River is a very natural gift to us. We should maintain well and properly, and this is going through heart of our Sugar Land. So I call it's my vision with the people I talk their vision, why can't we just remodel that river used for our tourist destination, like Times of London? And, you know, what journey in Europe is the heart of Sugar Land. Across the county line, it's a beautiful river. So we have to have that vision to fulfill that and bring Sugar Land as one of the best landmarks in the world. So I will work for that. I will work for that vision. That's my one of the vision for the environmental here and keep our parks, dog parks, all our green as it is, and we need that.
Thank you. Carol?
Yes, I think that the Brazos River erosion long-term is the greatest challenge that is facing not only Sugar Land, but the entire region. The river is going to meander over the course of time, and it has already meandered to the point that it has severely eroded part of the Branley Bike Trail, and we lost a whole mile section of the trail because the river moved a couple hundred feet. And long-term projections show that it could impact some homes in Greatwood and other areas. And I've spoken with the professor at college at Texas A&amp;M who is doing the modeling on this work. So it's mean, it's not an exact science, but there's a range of that, and that's something that we need to work toward, and that regionally is a billion-dollar project. And that is something that is outside the city's budget to fund. So we're going to need to get some federal funding to assist us with this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna?
Well, sticking with the water theme, I think I will go back to an issue that I hear a lot about in District One, and that is water conservation, actually. I know the city is doing some work on the demand side and the supply side to conserve water. It sounds very simple in its practice, but it's very critical as we're moving toward additional pressure to move to surface water. So the city is doing things like checking meters to make sure they're working properly. They're actually going out to residents' homes to give free irrigation inspections to see if homeowners are losing large amounts of water. They're working with retailers and businesses to go to automated irrigation systems, which is amazing. They have devices that will check the waterfall, the rainfall, and cut the system off. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is, when it comes to commercial development or redevelopment, what does the term quote-unquote "smart growth" for Sugar Land look like to you? And we'll start with Saki.
It's a good subject. Smart growth, uh, that's one of my tagline. I work smart and I make Sugar Land smart. Great, uh, we need to use a lot of technology. You know, we have well-developed city, but we have to use the mo- cutting-edge technology implement to these developments. We could use autonomous lot of things with the artificial intelligence to mobility, between the buildings and the services. So we have to implement, we have to go path forward in that direction. Not we just go back in the old, uh, you know, formula, but we have, the, uh, United States have this best technology available here. So we should follow that and that makes very environmentally friendly and, uh, you know, um, profitable and, uh, make our economy looks good.
All right, thank you. Carol, what does "smart growth for Sugar Land" mean to you?
Well, one thing that we need to do is we, as we continue to grow, is we need to make sure that we have good mobility throughout our city. And right now, we proactively have a citizens' task force that is looking at our future mobility issues. And it's looking at, you know, how can, in addition to driving our cars, what, how can we make things more friendly for people to, to walk or bike? We're also looking at the latest in traffic technology so that we can continue to have the, the lights timed as well as possible to really optimize the traffic. But then, like I said, we are, uh, in a position where we are fairly fully built out except for a few key areas in the city. And so we are gonna be looking at, um, some infill and some redevelopment of our existing commercial areas. For example, you know, several years down the road, are we really gonna still have a First Colony Mall? Are we still going to have an AMC movie theater? And those are areas that I expect will need to be, uh, redeveloped as part of smart growth.
Thank you, thank you so much. Uh, Donna, talk to us about smart growth.
Smart growth to me, um, it, it goes back to a strategic vision for the city. And that starts with input from all residents. And, uh, where that takes us is helping guide us to determine the best use for the land or for an existing building that may have become vacant like Carol referred to. And what we're trying to do hopefully is have a balance, um, fill a need, fill a void, and be able to increase the tax dollars that are coming into the city thereby hopefully reducing the tax rate or the tax burden for all residents if we can attract some commercial development back to Sugar Land. Uh, but I think for me, it goes back to wants and needs and filling voids and looking long-term into what the demographics of Sugar Land will be.
Thank you so much. Suzanne?
Thank you. This is an exciting question for me and I, I eat this one up. Uh, if you look at the twenty-eighteen land use plan, it's full of ideas for redevelopment and development. Sugar Land right now has plateaued. We are becoming an aging city. Aging infrastructure, aging people, and aging housing. We have an opportunity right now for redevelopment and that's exciting. It can be scary, but it's not. It's exciting. Because like Carol said, we are looking at a different way of shopping and living and doing things. We are looking at a new, new demographics. We are trying to get our youth back into our city. They are graduating with honors and they are intelligent. And they're not coming back here. We have an opportunity to gain our people coming back here with intelligence and starting jobs and families. If we can redevelop what we have, that what otherwise deteriorate, taking those malls and making them into use, mixed-use projects. That's in front of us and it's exciting.
Thank you. All right, for this question, you will have ninety seconds, all right? Uh, what do you believe are the three largest issues facing the city of Sugar Land in the next five to ten years? And how would you address them? Carol, we'll start with you.
Well, my three core, um, goals that I always work on are public safety, traffic mobility, and drainage. And we work very hard to support our police and all of our first responders so they can keep our city safe. And we want to make sure that they are well-trained. And so that is always at the forefront of what we as city council do. And also, as I mentioned earlier, uh, traffic mobility is, is very important to our residents. We are finishing up a widening of Highway Six. Uh, we've got a widening of University Boulevard planned between Westcott and, and Lexington. But the, really, the big key issue to me that's facing our city is drainage. And when we did the ninety-million-dollar bond project, over half of those projects were for, to improve drainage in our city. Because in Hurricane Harvey, we had about two-hundred-and-fifty homes flood. In the May seventh, twenty-nineteen rain event, we had a number of homes flood again. And some of those homes flooded in, in, in both events. So the city did a lot of work with, um, with modeling and we, and we worked with our Lids to figure out which was the lid problem and which was the, the city, uh, city issue, which was why they said we pursued the, um, November twenty-nineteen bond election. And which is why we have three million dollars of drainage projects that we're working on this year for Great Wood. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. What do you believe are the three largest issues facing the city of Sugar Land in the next five to ten years? And how would you address them?
So I think the three largest issues again are, uh, safety and security, quality of life here in Sugar Land, and mobility. And I'd like to focus on safety and security. We, we've just gotten an amazing report back that, um, the crime rate in Sugar Land is at its lowest. And that's a great thing, but I think it's also important to have continuous improvement. And I focus on that because when I was at First Colony Mall, I feel like we walked hand-in-hand with the police department. And that is because, um, it's, it's top of mind to everybody, whether you're a resident or retailer or you're in business. And we look for the programs that help the police department do their job. I believe we were the first business partner to install license recognition, um, for license plates on our, um, infrastructure at the mall. We worked hard to have our live feed security cameras go live. It's, you know, we were there post-nine-eleven. Uh, we managed this mall through active shooter events and we felt like those types of technology were very important for the police department.
Thank you. Suzanne? Sure. Three largest issues facing the city in the next five to ten years and how would you address them?
Thank you. I think Carol hit on, on drainage and, and that is one of them. And, and as Donna referred to, safety. We have a lot of issues and I'm, I'm referring to my priorities. I, I'm a small business advocate, a small business owner. My husband's a small business owner and we've seen a lot happen during COVID. We were going along just great as an economy and business was doing good. One of the things I think is important that we have to recognize is small business is the heartbeat of this community, of every community. We have to protect that. So we need to look at the recovery of small business and business in general in our, in our city. And I know our city's doing a great job. In the last six years, we brought in huge businesses that have sustained our tax burden, or helped our tax burden to our citizens. And that's important. We've, uh, held over four thousand jobs just by those businesses and we've retained over a thousand. So business is crucial to our society and to our community. We have to keep looking at building our economic development here. That's, that's huge. Safety again is a big thing. I'm a huge advocate for the fire department. As if, if, if you didn't know that by now, I work closely with them. I think we need to keep working with our fire and police departments. We, I keep hearing about training. We have to have training for our police department and fire department. We need to keep working to make sure they have what they need to train correctly. And we need to keep hiring the correct individuals for our departments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Saki?
Yes, um, I'll say citizen police, um, you know, graduate, uh, I can say safety is the number one priority, you know? We are moving forward. We see the crime does not stop in the city line. That crime travel across the city. So we have to be, uh, equipped with the well-trained, the police officers in, 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 in the Sugar Land. That's one of my highest priority and that, we will face more safety issues in the future. That's how the world looks like right now. So we have to build them, back them better way and train them. Especially, I talked to the police chief a few weeks ago. You know, I, I, I really know what exactly they wanted. They need more training. I'm very advocate out for the police and safety, fire, all safety aspects. And secondary things, the businesses. We lost a lot of the businesses. So many small businesses are losing now because they cannot afford it. So we need to have a contingency plan to back up another business or, or renew these closed businesses. For example, like we have a good graduates from Sugar Land. People are going actually in different city. Why can't we call them back here, give them an opportunity, do some startup technology businesses? If Silicon Valley can grow, then why can't we make another one here in Sugar Land? Why can't we just, uh, provide a best brain into the world? So this is what I am looking forward to the next ten to five years, sorry, ten to fifteen years.
Thank you so much. Um, next is, what is your vision for arts and culture in Sugar Land post-pandemic? We'll start with you, Donna.
Oh, I love this question. Um, if you don't know, I have been involved with the restoration of, uh, Sugar Land Auditorium, the oldest building in the city of Sugar Land. And we have been working to restore that building. And we're to a point where we're actually now focused on taking arts and culture out into the community. So we've invited them in to this wonderful restored auditorium, but now we're also focused on taking it out into the community. Arts and culture is a very critical piece of tourism and, uh, economic development. And so anything that we can do to promote that, uh, to partner with the schools. I know we spend a lot of time through our Cultural Arts Foundation where we're partnering with the Fort Ben Schools to start children at an early age. We're taking them in buses to go see opera. So it's creating an interest and continuing that through their adulthood.
Thank you so much. Next we have Suzanne.
Thank you. This is an exciting, uh, exciting question because art and, uh, the beauty that it has for our city is, 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 I think it's imperative for our city. In twenty-fourteen, the city recognized the need to include art around the city. And the beauty, the beautiful thing about this is it includes the diverse community we live in. You can see art on the bridges. It's, it's everywhere. And I think the vision for the city at the time was to include art in, in industry and in bridges and landscapes, uh, all over the place. We can see that on our traffic box projects. And that, that's just one of the beautiful ways we can take some of the expressions from our citizens and put it out for the world to see. Everybody's recognized Sugar Land, not just for its forward thinking, but for its creativity. And as Donna said, we've opened up places where people can display their art for the kids, for students, for artists to be recognized. It, it's a wonderful way for Sugar Land to be open and creative and inclusive.
Thank you so much. Saki?
Art and culture, the, we are actually, you know, when you go to, uh, city center, look around there one Sunday evening, you can see an entire world there. Every people from different nation, culture, and, uh, the diversity, you know? But we still need to explore more. There's a lot of groups of people. They have a festival, they have a style of living and the art we, we not explored yet. As if I elected in city council, this is what I'm gonna do the first thing. Bridging between the cultures, you know, bring them and diversity, not only in the religion, not only in the color, in the business, in the, uh, in example, the food. I go to the city center, I know there is some, uh, foreign foods and, but it's not enough. We need to bring more people. There are, people are there, so we need to encourage them to do that. So city need to provide, city need, uh, make a program to encourage these people to come in the front line and make our city more popular and more affordable and, uh...
Thank you so much. Carol?
Smart Financial Center is in the heart of District Four and it is a beautiful state-of-the-art facility with entertainers from all over and all different backgrounds who come to, who have come to perform there. And I'm looking forward to the post-pandemic environment when we get back to being able to regularly have concerts there. And just a few days ago, I saw where ticket sales were going on to an event in October. So I'm excited about that. And then we do a lot of just smaller things in their city. We have a, uh, art manager on city staff and she's working to bring more art into the city. But we've got a beautiful mosaic piece at Crown Festival site. We've got traffic, uh, wraps, uh, around our traffic boxes that really added a nice bit of color. And we're looking to do more, uh, public art that's on our bridges. And we have so many different, uh, multicultural festivals that we've had held in the past in, uh, the plaza and also at Constellation Field. And I'm looking forward to those coming back to our city. And the International Kite Festival recently was great.
Thank you. All right, next question, uh, we'll start with Suzanne. As it relates to animal welfare and the proposed new shelter, what are your views to ensure community buy-in? As it relates to animal welfare and the proposed new shelter, what are your views to ensure community buy-in?
Thank you. Uh, that's an important question. As we know, that, that bond passed and it was, uh, it was almost unanimous. It was a great, uh, passage. So we know our citizens want the, the animal shelter. In two thousand and eight, we built our first shelter. And I think it was, uh, twenty-four dogs and thirty-five cats and we expected a hundred-and-fifty adoptions. Uh, we are now at eight-hundred-and-fifty adoptions in that same unit. We have expanded it as much as we can. So we know our citizens are using it. We know that we have a need for animal welfare and animal care. Our shelter has done a great job in taking care of them, but we have exceeded the shelter, the shelter that we're in now. So right now, we can't build that shelter. We, we put it off. The, the bond is on hold right now. But as soon as we can, it's gonna be available. Our citizens cannot surrender animals there and our citizens go there to adopt them. It's, it, they've already bought in.
Thank you. Saki?
Yes, animal welfare is one of the important thing I believe in, uh, we have to have in, uh, Sugar Land. As a proud pet owner, I love animals and, uh, you know, they are the part of our life. Especially, like Suzanne said, uh, our aging populations. They are the animals and dogs and cats are their companion at the home. So I can sense that my, my, my daughter and my parents love the dogs and they're associated, you know, taking the dogs to walk. So this is a very, I know the animal shelter program is temporarily on hold, but I'm looking forward that to be, uh, you know, to execute that project as soon as is possible. It is, I think, the, our economy will, uh, allow us to, to continue better than, you know, sooner.
Thank you. Carol?
Animal welfare is very important to the citizens of Sugar Land. After we annexed Great Wood and new territory, we realized that our existing shelter was too small for our future needs. So that's why city council put expansion of our animal shelter in the November twenty-nineteen bond election and it overwhelmingly passed. To make sure that the citizens are really engaged in this process, one of the first things that we did was to expand the citizens' animal advisory board from five people to thirteen people. So that way, we would have a more diverse number of opinions on the board. And then as we go through the process, we will be having citizen engagement processes so we can make sure that we hear from our residents about how we want to carry this out. And like I said, we've got the Memorial Dog Park, which no one has mentioned yet, which is a great place to, uh, take our animals. And, um, we just really wanna care for our animals here in the city.
Thank you. Donna?
Thank you. So we are dog people ourselves, grew up with English Bulldogs and Dalmatians, much to my husband's chagrin maybe. But, um, I think, you know, one of the things, clearly, there's a... there's a need. The, the current animal shelter is not, is not working probably the way it needs to in terms of the, the volume over there. But one of the things that maybe could be considered, and it could be talked about through this animal advisory board, sometimes you have to take your show on the road. And I worked with the SPCA and sponsored pet adoptions where we went out to different businesses, different festivals, set up a nice event, and actually had a lot of people adopting pets on site for those events.
Thank you so much. Now, this question is for District Four. Each candidate will be allowed 90 seconds to answer. Exciting. Top of mind for residents in District Four is what the future holds for Track Five. That's the undeveloped site next to the Smart Financial Center. What is your vision of how the property should be used for the district? And we'll start with Saki.
It's a good question. I think, you know, our seniors, actually, they invested for this city. This is time we need to take, take care of them. So we need to have a multi-level family, old age, you know, the seniors independent living. That's what one of my dream there if it can happen there. Because, you know, they, they were built, they built this entire city, our senior citizens. We cannot ignore them. We need to give them the best facility when they are in the retire, best facility we have to provide them. So I am all for that, the seniors and to develop and thus independent living center. That's, that's one of the main, and keep it nicely, environmentally friendly, and extend that park maybe a little bit, and they can walk it all.
All right. Thank you. Carol?
Track Five is a key issue for residents of District Four. The city owns acreage in undeveloped acreage on Track Five. And our vision for that is for that to be a hotel conference center. Now, because of the current economic development situation, those plans have been pushed back for a while. But we would also like to have a community playhouse or a community arts center also on the city's portion of the land. FLUR owns another portion of the undeveloped land there. They had approved a $250 million corporate headquarters there. But again, because of the financial situation, those plans have been put on hold. MD Anderson owns a tract of land there. And in the future, they will be expanding MD Anderson to that location here in Sugar Land. And then Newland is the other land owner of the undeveloped land there. Between the MD Anderson site and ditch H, a suburban type of medical office is planned. And then in the core part of Newland's land, the city has a requirement for them to have at least 1 million square feet of Class A office space there. And that's also going to include restaurants, retails, hopefully some additional smaller entertainment venues, and a age-restricted senior living center. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This question is only for District One, and you will each have 90 seconds. So we talked about Imperial Market earlier. What other economic development efforts happening in District One do you plan to champion and why? Donna, we'll start with you.
In District One, I think one of the most exciting things that we can definitely champion is that the Astros have bought into the Skeeters and now own a majority part of that team. And what that has done for the development in and around Imperial has definitely started to pique people's interest. So we have tracts of land around Constellation that are all of a sudden getting the buzz, which is nice, because we have had to deal with the Imperial Market situation that hasn't been as exciting. There is also another business park on the books. And based on the existing success of the first business park, I believe that that is definitely something that we should be champ, being champions of. And I agree with Saki because I think at some point, you know, we're starting, we need to start to look at technology. And when I was at Rice Village District, the owners bought the old Sears building, and they're doing a great job at turning that Sears building into this wonderful technology site. So I think the business park is definitely very exciting for the District One.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. We talked about Imperial Market earlier. What other economic development efforts happening in your district, District One, do you plan to champion and why?
Thank you. In District One, we have, it's a great district, first of all. We have so many different diverse areas. We have Imperial, we have the airport. District One has the business park. District One has the oldest part of the city. And we also have the newest parts of the city. So when we look at champion, being a champion of something different, we need to include everyone. I've been spending some time in the unheard of parts, and they've been calling themselves ugly steps, ugly stepchildren of the city. And I don't like that. I don't like it at all. So when I want to be inclusive, I want to talk about, let's go to the parts of the city that we don't see a whole lot and talk to those people and see what we can do for them. It's great to bring in business, and we are already doing that. But let's talk about the needs of the people that are not getting heard. I see some great parks out there. Let's build on those parks. There's not enough space for those, those neighborhoods that don't have parks. We've got Eldridge Park, which is great. But what about further in the district that, that we don't have areas for? I want to make sure that the people who are growing families, all of them, every single family growing in this district, has a place to have fun, relax. And they don't need to spend money to do that. Let's have some outdoor space for them. We've got business going on. We've got a lot of great things. The Skeeters are now the AAA's. Let's look at some basic needs getting met.
Thank you so much. All right. We now go back to questions for everyone. As Sugar Land works to position itself as an economic engine for the region, what do you believe is a key differentiator for the city, what it has to offer in attracting jobs and businesses as compared to other regional communities? We'll start with Carol.
Thank you. So we have the industrial park there in District One. And then over there near the airport area, we bought the old prison property. And part of that is being used for expansion of our top-class regional airport there. And then the rest of that land is available to expand that into a new industrial park. So I think that's going to be a key development for, in our city. And then as we talked about before, Track Five is going to be very critical because we have the opportunity there for a million square feet of office space and a hotel conference center to bring that in. And then we have all sorts of, I said, infill and redevelopment opportunities that will be coming our way. And we also have the University of Houston, Sugar Land, right there in District Four. And that is something that I hope we can work together with them to help build a bright future.
Thank you so much. Donna, talk to us about bringing this, this city to be the economic driver for the region.
Well, one thing I'd like to focus on that's a little bit different, but it is definitely a driver, is city governance. So I think that all eyes are on cities and how they govern and how they respond to crises. And I think what would drive the economic growth hand in hand is that we have a city who is able to attract and maintain an energized workforce, allowing them to be innovative in their projects, innovative in their research, reaching out to both residential and commercial developers and partners. And the, the, the things that drive the decisions made by city council and by staff are critical in the eyes of people who want to move their businesses and their families here.
Thank you so much. Suzanne?
Thank you. When you, when you have businesses looking to move here, and I'm talking big businesses that employ a lot of people, our small businesses, our families, they start to look at Sugar Land and they go, why would I move here? I have kids that are in their 30s. I have kids in their 20s. And I'm saying, why would you move here? Why don't you move here? And the feedback I get is because there's not this, or there's not that. But when you have a family that looks to move here, or if I'm looking here, we've got the best place in the world. We've got healthcare. Remember, I'm, I'm looking at healthcare, and it's right in my backyard. We've got number one healthcare here. We've got venues. We've got, I don't have to go far to go see a top-rated show. It's right here in my backyard. There are sports and entertainment here. We have some of the best restaurants right here in this city. This city is so inclusive of everything you need. I don't drive more than five or 10 miles to get what I want. I don't have to go anywhere to shop. It's all right here in this city. Why wouldn't you move your business or your family here?
All right. Thank you. Saki?
Yes, we can build multiple building, but what if we don't have a plan to what kind of the business is running there? So we have to promote our local businessmen. We have to promote our local students from the university. Technology Center is down the street there. Why can't we support the startup business in Sugar Land? Let them cherish and let them take our word to the rest of the world. And Brussels River is not a problem. We can make a solution. And airport, expand that and attract more private jet here, then the hotel industry will automatically will grow. And there is so many solutions we can do that. I think that if we coordinate as a city government, like Donna said, everything coordinate well and do the case study properly, we can implement all these things. We can achieve the good economic growth. As an economic graduate, I know that how that's work. I can help the city council and make it to the next level.
Thank you. All right. Next question. When it comes to governance, there are many things that Sugar Land does very well. But what is one area where you think the city can do better? And how would you tackle this issue? So in governance, where can we improve? And how would you handle it? Saki, let's start with you.
Communicate with the people. All about is all governance is go back to the people. The city need to be communicate efficiently with the people. The people can understand what exactly going in the city center. So we cannot ignore the people's need. And any city service they provide, it should be an efficient. And right now, I personally, in my resident, in the, in the area where I live, felt so much of bad experience. But again, city doing the great job during the winter storm. I congratulate for the city managers provide the water for my, in their neighborhood. I, you know, I was there to help him. But again, the communication is the key issue to the people's, what exactly happening here. That's what I, I want to they improve.
Thank you. Carol?
Could you please repeat the question?
Yes. When it comes to governance, what is one area where you think the city can do better? And how would you tackle it?
Well, first I'll say, overall, I think the city does a great job at governance. And we have the second lowest tax rate of any city, over 60,000 people. And we have a AAA bond rating, which allows us to borrow money at the lowest possible cost. And we have a very robust financial management policy. The city works very hard to be transparent and to reach out to citizens through social media and a variety of ways. We did a great job on the actual winter freeze. But one area of improvement going forward is the city did not focus on the aftermath of the freeze. They did not really realize the magnitude of the bulk waste and the, the green waste that we were going to have. And so it, it's stacked up there for a couple of weeks, and we brought in extra services for that. So in the future, I'd like the city to focus more on, you know, emergency preparedness and, and the aftermath of that.
Thank you. Donna?
Yeah, I would agree that the aftermath of some of these events that we go through with regard to weather, and, and we're getting, we're getting better. I was happy to go to a city council meeting this week where they've already developed plans on how to deal with trash after the fact. So they, they move at a quick rate. The other thing that I do think we do very well, but again, it's, it's one of those things that it needs to be continuous improvement, and that is getting resident input, citizen involvement, partnering with other entities in the city, like the chamber, like this center, like the school district. The more people that you can enroll in the process, the better your outcomes will be. And I know they gauge themselves based on the resident satisfaction surveys, which came in very high. But you're also trying to reach further and get more input.
Thank you. Suzanne?
I'm going to ask you to repeat the question.
Okay. When it comes to governance, what is one area where you think the city can do better? And how would you tackle it?
Thank you. A lot of Carol's answer is absolutely spot on. I think our city is, is doing a great job in addressing the issues at hand and responding to some of the things that happened during the storm. I run my business like a business, and I know as a council manager, governance, our city runs like a business. And every time there's an issue in my business, it's because of communication or lack thereof. And I think that is a huge point for our city, to make sure our citizens understand what's going on. And sometimes I don't think they care enough to ask. But as council members, we have to keep our constituents informed of what's going on. When they see a tax increase, they need to know it's not because we aren't taking care of our money, but what it's actually for. Communication is key to happy constituents, informed constituents.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Now, next question. Sugar Land is one of the most culturally diverse cities in the country. As a city council member, what do you feel are some of the things the cities can do to truly make our diversity our strength? And Donna, we start with you.
Yeah, that, that's a good question. So we are a city where it's a majority of minorities, if you will. And I think that the city has done an excellent job in reaching out to groups that specifically deal with certain diversity and bringing them together. And, you know, I, again, I think that they have programs like Sugar Land 101, the Police Academy. And what you're starting to see is that the composition does in fact reflect the diversity. And so that is a good thing. The staff at the city of Sugar Land, same thing, also attracting diverse populations to work and deal with the citizens.
Thank you. We are diverse, and people are looking at Sugar Land to see what we're doing with that, not about it, but with that. Because I think we celebrate it. Everything you see in Sugar Land includes a diverse amount of people. And we look to include people, to understand people and their diverse beliefs and race. If you look at any board or any commission, we are looking for input so we know how to respect different cultures and engage them. On our, the, the new 2020 focus that just came out, it was all about inclusion. It was all about understanding. We as a, as a community are being looked at by, by everyone right now. And I think our city is doing a great job of reaching out and being inclusive.
Thank you so much. Saki?
I think we are doing great job actually in the, reaching out the diversity, by the different community. I think, but still, city can do a lot more. We can reach out more people. You know, like I said earlier, Sugar Land is a mini world. Then you can, you can see all kind of people from all, all over the world. And that's one of the reason I choose to come and live in Sugar Land. I like it. And, but again, as if, city doing that, but I think city need to make us some more effort to reach out. Many other groups are there, and many festivals. For example, like we know about the Holly and Bollywood. For example, like we know about Holly and Bollywood and some other festivals we are used to it, but still there is the group people celebrate some, you know, huge amount of the people. I said maybe 20,000 of people are celebrating some celebration, which we are not identified yet. But as if I elected in city council, I can reach out a lot of people because I grew up with all this multicultural level in my childhood.
Thank you so much. Carol?
Well, by some accounts, Sugar Land is the city, county, and the entire United States. And the city works hard to make sure that their workforce reflects that, that reflects that diversity and that the employees are trained with respect to that diversity. And it's cutting out here. It's just a really great area where we have a lot of different, as I said, festivals and opportunities to bring people together. And I would like to see us bring more multicultural type of festivals, our Brazos River Park. And then boards and commissions and like the Sugar Land 101, we've got the citizens' police, fire, airport academies. And we work hard to bring a wide variety of citizens onto those committees so they can learn more about our cities and learn more about how they can get involved with our city and then serve our city in the future. But we are a beautiful tapestry here of many different cultures.
Thank you. All right. Sugar Land is home to a large variety of civil society organizations at work for our city. How can the city council work together with these organizations to best improve the quality of life for all Sugar Land residents? Suzanne, we'll start with you.
Thank you. That's a great question. Council members don't have just the responsibility of understanding governance. It's a great responsibility. But they need to understand how to serve the constituents. And part of that service is understanding how nonprofits, how civic organizations, and how the community leaders serve the people. And the distinction between service and the city responds to those needs. Serving in the community over the 24 years and especially over the last six or seven in preparing for this position, it's important to know who meets what needs and what those needs are. The city has been really responsive and working with nonprofits. Every time there's a nonprofit event, the city shows up to support it. We're having huge nonprofits come back now and the city is right there beside us supporting them. They always re, oh, there's so much more. Thank you.
All right. Saki?
Can you repeat the question one more time, please?
Sure. How can the city council work with our many civil society organizations to best improve the quality of life for all Sugar Land residents?
Again, this goes back to our diversity question because, you know, we have a multiple group here. And as a city council should have to understand these people, what we're going to do further with them. And I think it is that we have a different faith-based organizations and other civic organizations that are doing wonderful job here in Sugar Land to keep our city beautiful. And our, you know, our people taking care of, you know, for example, like a few other days before I met Interfaith Prayer Vigil, that's something that I really, you know, enjoyed it, you know? So those kinds of activities can bring people together. As with my experience, I can bring more people together in the, you know, because of my path experience with the multicultural, working with the different group. And again, we should have the diversity, not only in the outside of the city council, we should have it inside the city council as well.
Thank you. Carol?
The city has a really good relationship with the nonprofit organizations in and around our city and ours county. And they are very supportive of all of the different nonprofit organizations' events, which I think is really great. And for an example, I serve on the Skeeters Baseball Foundation Board. And our mission is to help disadvantaged youth in and around the Fort Bend County area. And so we are a location project this year. And so I went to the city and said, hey, please help me get the word out to the nonprofits in Fort Bend County so they can be aware that the Skeeters Baseball Foundation has grant opportunities that they can apply for. And they said, sure, we will get your request and send it out to all of our nonprofit partners so they can know and then apply for grants. So I think it's really great that we have that kind of relationship to support our nonprofits because they're a very integral part of our community.
Thank you. Donna?
I will echo the same thing. I think the city of Sugar Land and the community nonprofits just are amazing. I do feel like there is one area that we could be better at. And I actually found this out through walking through one of the neighborhoods after the winter storm. And it has to do with outreach. You know, we're trying to help everyone that we can. And there are people that don't have access to internet. They're not going to get on a computer. They can't find out on their phone. And so we, and I may be a little premature in talking about this, but I am part of a club that is hoping to go in and adopt a neighborhood that doesn't have all of these wonderful technological advances. They're never going to hear about the things that we have to offer. So we've got to go to them. And that's what we're planning to do. And hopefully that will be the start of something very big. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're on to our final question as we approach the end of this forum, but this will not be the hardest, I promise. Visualize this. So you won the election and you're at the end of your first term as city council member. Looking back, what would you like people to remember about your term and your accomplishments? We'll start with Saki.
Can you repeat that question again?
Yeah. So you pretend you won the election already. And it's already, and your term's already over and you think back. If you, at the end of your first term, what would you like people to remember about what you've accomplished?
I think I will be the best friend of the people. Whenever they needed, I was there with for them. That was one of the spontaneous thing I can tell because I'm, I have the passion to serve the people. I am among the people. I'm not in my cubicle or office. I will be. But if I elected, if people have a need, they don't have to come to city council. I will be there for you. And my numbers or my emails is already transparent. It's my personal number all over, everywhere in the social media. People can contact me anytime, day or night, no problem. I will for you. I will be, I will be helping for you, for any of your needs.
Thank you. Carol?
I'd like my residents to remember that I have continued to be there for them, that I have been very responsive to the needs that I would like for them to know that I had worked very, very hard on drainage projects and that those drainage projects have been accomplished. For example, I've got over $8 million in funding for Avalon, Brazos Landing, and Commonwealth for improved drainage projects. And I very much want to have that at the end of my next term. And I also want to make some improvement on the oil expansion check. So, and also with improving our roads, our infrastructure is aging. So I would like to make sure that we have gotten our roads rehabilitated and our sidewalks rehabilitated because that's also a part of keeping our residents safe.
Thank you so much. Donna, if you won and you already finished your term, what do you want people to remember you by?
I want people to remember me by acknowledging that I led with transparency, honesty, humility, that I walked side by side with them to fix the smallest of problems, whether it be a cracked sidewalk or the biggest of issues, which is trying to get life back into the imperial project. I want people to know that I was a big help in looking at ways to stimulate economic development, looking at commercial redevelopment, and that they can come to me whenever they need me, really, that I'm there for them.
Thank you so much. Suzanne?
Thank you. This won't take a whole minute. I want, at the end of this, for my constituents to know my heart was in it, by my actions, by my deeds, by everything I do, just like kind of who I am. I want them to say, are you going to run again? I want them to know their vote counted by the way I handled myself when I was in office, period. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we get to your favorite part, the closing. You have one minute for your closing statement and Carol, we'll start with you.
Thank you. I would like to thank you for hosting the candidate forum today. And I would like to thank those of you who served on the editorial committee. With respect to District four, I am the candidate who is committed, capable, and ethical. I am the candidate with the knowledge, experience, and leadership skills needed to keep our city strong and vibrant. I am the candidate with the proven track record of getting things done for my constituents. I am the candidate who is passionate about our city and who has a strategic vision for our future. Early voting is April 19th through the 27th. I again ask the voters of District four for your vote and support so I can continue to be your voice on city council. Together, we can continue to create a bright future for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Donna?
Thank you. I would like to tell you that I am so excited to be running for this position. I love this city. I have worked in the city at a time where we experienced our most tremendous growth ever and worked with community and business leaders to help build relationships that have lasted throughout my time here. I would like to think that as a city, we would protect our history, we would embrace our diversity, and that we will be really successful in everything that we do. I have three decades of experience that I would love to give to the voters and I would love to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Suzanne?
I got this question. I can tell you that I've prepared for this for six years. I can tell you that my husband and I have prayed about this. I can tell you that this is something I am passionate about. I've already told you that. But I'm going to tell you something different that I didn't plan I'd tell you. Yesterday, I got a call from someone at my office and said, you've got to come over here and pick up a sign and deliver it to someone. And I said, okay, who is it? And she gave me the name. And I said, fine. So I called the lady and I said, I'll bring you a sign. My name is Suzanne. Who are you? And she said, my name is Beverly. And I said, sure, I'll bring you a sign. How do you know me? She said, three years ago, I came into your office. You took a lot of time and effort to make a shirt for my husband. I will never forget the time and effort you put into taking care of me. If you can do that on council for me, you got my vote. I need your sign. That's who I want to be. That's who I can be for you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Saki?
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity, especially District four. I want your vote. You know why? One reason, I have that passion to serve for you. And I was walking Greenwood, Sutton Park, Commonwealth, Avalon, Brazos Landing. You will see me if I'm in the city councilman at least once in a while. None of you don't have to ask me the next time, who is our councilman? Because I'm seeing that so many questions right now. But let me tell you, I will be for you there, no matter what. Rain or shine, I will be for you there and help you. You can call me anytime. I definitely going to support and uplift the District four in the next future. I can work with the people. I can work with organizations. I can improve the economic, the climate with my expertise, my analysis, and I can work with the innovation department. Make this city beautiful. Please vote for me.
Thank you, Saki. That ends our forum. I know, the time just flew by. You can applaud that. On behalf of Rayhan and myself, we want to thank all the candidates for taking the time to participate today. Running for office, especially local office, is a challenge. So being dedicated is so important. So thank you all so much for willing to put yourselves out there. Sugar Land residents undoubtedly benefit from the opportunity to hear from each and every one of you and your unique views and perspectives on all these issues. We'd like to remind all our viewers that early voting runs from April 19th to the 27th and Election Day is May 1st. On behalf of the Ismaili Council for the Southwestern U.S., the Fort Bend County Chamber of Commerce, the League of Women Voters Houston, and ABC 13, we want to thank all of you for joining us today. And go vote.